Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, September 14th, 2016. At this time, would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to request a moment of silence in memory of Olive Ponce Mendoza, who passed away this past week, and also in remembrance of the 15th anniversary of the terrorist attack of 9/11, and all of those who were killed and injured during that attack. Thank you.
Approval of the minute?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following minutes be approved: Executive Session, February 1st, 2016; Department Heads Meeting, March 2nd, 2016; Executive Session, May 9th, 2016; and the Board of Selectmen's Regular Meeting, August 17th, 2016.
I'll step down and second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Approval of the warrants?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved: Warrant 10A-17 in the amount of $87,970.29 payroll; warrant 10B-17 in the amount of $46,566.99, both accounts payable, both dated September the 7th; warrant 11A-17 in the amount of $87,964.78 payroll; and warrant 11B-17 in the amount of $100,396.15, accounts payable dated September 14th. Be approved.
I'll step down and second that motion. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Next on the agenda, under the title Correspondents', we have a piece of correspondence from the Board of Sewer Commissioners announcing a vacancy on the sewer commission. We have a memo here from the Office of the Board of Commissioners, Town of Dayton, stating, "Michael Dufour has resigned from the sewer commission effective 8:30 16. Attaches a copy of his resignation letter. The remaining two commissioners are requesting the Board of Selectmen announce the vacancy at their next public meeting. Please request a letter of interest be sent to the Board of Selectmen by September 21st, 2016. Please then forward the letters to the sewer commission for review at their September 26th, 2016 meeting. A recommendation will then be given to the selectmen for their approval. Thank you for your assistance with this matter. Please contact the sewer department if you require additional information." And along with that, for our files, we have a resignation letter stating, "I, Michael Dufour, will be resigning from the Dayton Sewer Commission Board effective on August 30th, 2016. The reason for resignation is that I'm moving out of town." It's a good reason.
Did that go to Sue Medeiros? Do we know? Did he submit that? Or did somebody give it to Sue?
No, but I usually give her a copy.
Yeah, because that's who we should've addressed it to, is the town clerk. So was it, what's it, August 30th?
August 30th resignation. So again, ladies and gentlemen, if you're interested in applying for this position or being recommended for it, please, please send us a letter requesting so, and the deadline for that is September 21st, 2016. Next, the announcements. Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. You can call (508) 669-6431 for more information. Senator Mark Bacheko will be holding an office hour at Dayton Town Hall on Thursday, September 20th, from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. Walking walk-ins are always welcome, but if you'd like to make an appointment, please call (508) 823-0095. The Board of Selectmen will resume their regular weekly meeting schedule this week. The next meeting will be on Wednesday, September 21st, 2016, so we will be back on our weekly meeting schedule. There will be a flu shot clinic on Thursday, September 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. to noontime in the lower level of the Dayton Town Hall. You must be 18 years or older, and please bring your insurance cards. If you have any questions, please contact Tiffany Lopes at (508) 676-3370. These shots are provided by Rite Aid Pharmacy and is being hosted by the Dayton Council on Aging. Associates for Human Services will hold a spaghetti supper at St. Nicholas Amira on Friday, September 23rd, at 5:00 p.m., followed by a raffle at 6:30 p.m. Tickets are $10 for adults, $7 for seniors, and $5 for children. Please call (508) 880-0202 for tickets on further information. The Food Bank Distribution will take place Saturday, September 24th, from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. Meetings for the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health are now being posted to YouTube under the name Town of Dayton Meetings. The Historical Commission is looking for volunteers. Please come into the Selectmen's office to fill out a volunteer form if you are interested. The Fall Town Meeting will be Thursday, October 27th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Dayton Middle School. Articles for the Fall Town Meeting are due in the Selectmen's office by September 22nd at 3:00 p.m. There are currently unused items located at the transfer station available to the highest bidder. If you're interested, please submit written bids for these items at the Selectmen's office on and before September 29th at 3:00 p.m. Some of the items that you can put a bid on if you'd like to, interested in achieving them, is a Dayton portable generator. Another piece of equipment is a John Deere lawnmower, model L111A, and is another piece of equipment, an arc welder, which if you would like to look at, is located at the Highway Department. Again, if you're interested, just go and look at those articles and put a bid in.
One additional announcement: September 21st will also be the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Health, at 6:30.
Is there any old business?
No old business.
No old business. New business. First on the agenda, review, discuss an act, the intertribal council permitting process for proposed powwow to be held at Rogers Farm. Is there anyone that's going to be speaking for the powwow? Sure. If you'd like to stand up there and just state your name and... Here we are.
My name is Jay Singing Spirit Cunningham, and I'm the powwow coordinator. We were looking for a piece of property to host our October powwow. Reason being is because I have vendors all lined up, and they were, you know, like, I know we can't have it in the field and back, and they've already paid, you know, for their vending fee and everything, and I kinda have to, I kinda hate to have them disappointed, you know what I mean? And another thing, the chief and my friend Ruth are planning to be wed at this powwow, and it's gonna be a nice ceremony. It would be good for the public to witness, you know, it's traditional, it's gonna be done in a traditional way, and this gentleman here, Greg, offered his property to us as a donation. I know we've had problems in the past, you know, with, but that was only one incident, and we just happened to be the umbrella, the fellow, the guys on powwow, you know, with insurance. We were not really hosting that powwow. We did it for the livelihood of the sick and suffering alcoholic and addict, which I've been a member of Red Road for, going on almost 10 years now, and... The other incident with the supposed slot bucket or whatever, I wasn't really aware of it. It doesn't ordinarily happen. We usually run a pretty tight ship over there, you know. Mr. Bernardo's been over there and inspected before, and, you know, there hasn't been any incidents before, except, you know, except for the, I know my friend Lee, he used the electricity when he shouldn't have been doing it and like that, and, but, to get off the subject of that, the old powwow, it's, we still want to have the October powwow, because we celebrate, this is the council oak powwow, and we do want to honor the oak tree like we do every year. I know we have an oak tree ceremony coming up also that we do in November. That's an annual thing, but we do have that powwow in October every year, and like I say, there hasn't been any problems in the past, so I don't, I myself don't see why it would be an issue for us to acquire a permit for this. And that's about all I get to say. Any questions?
Well, I know the chief had come up last week and asked if we had a list of requirements and what have you. Basically, any requirements we have pertains to any event that people want to put on, whether it's on town-owned land or private property like this case is. There are some issues that, this is a little different than the powwows that you always held out here, because we have everything that's needed as a town for liability, to protect the residents and against any kind of liability. It's a little different situation having in a residential zone where the public is invited. So, we're not at liberty to dictate. We can only tell you what is permissible and what's not on property like that. This arrangement, just like you could have, you could go to somebody's backyard and have a wedding, you know, there's things that you know you have to do according to the owner of the property and what your responsibilities are. In this case, it's more or less between Mr. Rogers and the intertribal council, for the most part. On the second hand, there are responsibilities that we have to make sure that the general public is protected. We do have a packet that we give out that are really necessary conditions that everyone should look at and try to adhere to. There is no per se permit that you have to have to have your powwow. Vendors, peddlers, hawkers that may be selling things, they have to be licensed, and that's not only just coming from us, that would be from the state. Anyone that sells wares is supposed to have a state license. As far as insurances, again, that'd be between yourselves and Mr. Rogers. He now faces all the burden of all liabilities, because it's his property. We do have to make sure that the safety of the public is foremost, which means fire vehicles and ambulances must have easy access on and off the property. There must be hygiene available, portageons available for the public. There must be crowd control, you know, whether it's fireworks out back here, the library having movies out there, police have to be on the scene. They have to also make sure that parking is controlled, so it doesn't endanger the public or people walking, pedestrians, the flow of traffic. So these are things that you have to, it's all in this package of what you're recommended to have. Now, beyond that, it's not up to this board to say you cannot have it. Now, we can recommend yes or no, whether we approve it or not, but the ball is still in your court. All right? So I think what I'm trying to say is, this is like a verbal contract between somebody that owns the property and an outside event holder, all right? There's a lot of things that the two of you have to discuss and make sure that, you know, he's protected, he's held harmless of anything that might happen. I do believe that in the best interest of public safety, that the police should be on the premises for safety, because you don't know anything that can come up, you know, we've had instances out here that even a cow chips that, you know, it's a good thing police were on the scene. That's something that should be considered. Fire trucks or an ambulance, you don't know when you're gonna need them. They have to have very much clearance, whether it's a fire, somebody's had a heart attack, a spell, whatever, that they can't go in, they can't back out. They have to be able to turn around and, you know, get to the hospital, or something else. I say these things because it's, I don't know how much you've communicated and talked with each other. We do this for the sake of any event that goes on, and it's only a guideline and a list of conditions that you should be considering. Nancy, did you want to add anything?
I think you all know Jim Agia. Jim's the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer. Jim did visit the property with the ACO officer, because they have to do stable inspections, and Jim has written a recommendation regarding the event, and I will read that. "Selectmen in the people of Dayton, I am writing to you due to my absence in the upcoming meeting with the intertribal council regarding the proposed fall powwow. The Dayton Board of Selectmen, with input from town officials, have denied the council use of the field behind Town Hall due to repeated health and procedural infractions that appear regularly, problems that potentially can lead to harm and jeopardize the public's welfare. I feel that the council's actions had no malicious intent, but they have proven that poor judgment typically prevails during their venues. Through the wonder of social media, an alternate site has surfaced for the council to continue on with their fall event. The site is a residence with a stable for the boarding of horses, a site I am familiar with. The site possesses a stable license with the town. On occasion, I accompany the AC, meaning animal control officer, during her inspections for code complacency. The location is a large parcel, mostly treed, and set back a long distance from the road. The driveway is very narrow, less than 15 feet, and only partially paved, most of the gravel with large potholes and moguls to navigate on your way in. The driveway has brush-laden sides that would allow little room to pass if vehicles were parked along its path. There is residence parking that would fill quickly if more than a dozen or so cars parked there. There is a large agricultural barn on the property and at least one or two corrals for horses. It is obvious that this site, although perfect for a quiet secluded horse stable, is far from ideal for a public venue regardless of its cause. The driveway would prohibit access by emergency personnel and parking overflow would be a grave concern considering the narrow width of Elm Street. So many other questions come to mind, but I defer to Selectmen to elaborate if that hasn't been done already. I would request that the Selectmen deny any such petition and/or licensing for a powwow at the location on Elm Street. The council has proven the inability to decipher proper procedure and/or the welfare of those attending. This has been proven utilizing a site suited perfectly for public use. Imagine the consequence at a location that is not. One should also not forget the force of social media. How many people will actually show for this event? It has been well-publicized. I do not take this lightly and have composed this with a heavy hand, but my responsibilities as a public safety official have led me to believe the allowance of such an event may only end with remorse the following day. Additionally, if any powwows are to commence within Dayton, I recommend that, recommend the following at a minimum be met. The intertribal council should submit a written standard operating procedure that includes all license requirements, state and local, including deadlines for submissions, an emergency access plan, inspection procedures and contact information, policy for the removal of attendees who do not comply with health and safety standards, organizes contact information, and mostly, every location must first be presented to the Board of Selectmen before advertisement commences. Locations should be reviewed by the following departments: police, fire, highway, building and health, for conformance with public safety. I realize this has been a difficult topic for all of us, but my stance is clear: do things correctly or don't do them all. Don't do them at all. Respectfully submitted, James Di Agia, Jr., Building Commissioner. He sent us, he's on vacation, so he emailed this in to us.
Do you have any questions?
Go ahead, Greg.
The only thing I, only thing I can turn around and say is, they should, they might want them down and like, show us like what their reasoning is, like in person. Like, you know, in writing, it's usually, you know, it's frightening. They have to come up and talk to us, I know. Okay, well, let's see if we can come up with a mutual agreement. How about if we turn, say, a percentage of people are allowed to come on the property at one time for the event, or, you know, come up with some, like, some land where...
See, like I said, we have a package of what everyone is more or less required to do.
But I think before anything that goes any further, I think what we should plan on doing, and it might sound as silly as it does, is have the Dayton Fire Department come down with one of their trucks and see if they can get into that property without being stranded, stuck, see if they feel comfortable getting in.
I believe Mr. Agia asked the fire chief to visit the site.
Okay.
Again, that was before he, Mr. Agia's on vacation, so I believe he asked the fire chief, and quite frankly, the police chief should probably go too, and the highway department, since Mr. Agia talks about the entrance to the property.
Yeah, I know it's very, it's a very narrow entrance.
The parking is an issue?
Well, they were thinking of doing like off-site parking and having them...
Oh, a shuttle?
Yeah, like a shuttle.
That's fine.
But I would, I would really would like to have a fire truck itself and like an ambulance and like a highway department, have them coming with the vehicles that wouldn't, you know, need access in and out of it, and see, because if a fire truck can't get down, it's not safe. Point like I want to say right now, is you know I'd say...
And with the fire, I can tell you this from a building project that occurred in town when I was on the board the last time. A house was built at the end of a private road, and before the occupancy permit could be issued, the fire truck had to go down and make a big U-turn, and each time, the property owner said, "It's all set," so the truck went down, couldn't turn around, and the property, the house was right at the end, so in effect, you should build a cul-de-sac, a good-sized one in front, because it's private, you can use it for parking. But the property owner, before he could get the permit for occupancy, he had to extend that out so that a truck could go down there, or an ambulance, and make the swing without driving and backing up, because obviously, we're talking time if it's an emergency. So anyhow, that kind of a test was done.
I know an ambulance can get down and do to my grand, but I knew an ambulance was saying, "Get down and get out in a hurry with a bunch of people there," for my own personal. So I know an ambulance, and of course, the crews was able to get out of the middle. I am, because I know Dayton has a larger pool of, they require trucks, so I would really would like to see them try to get one down there, and if it can't, then it's an issue we're gonna have to address. Shouldn't be an issue, because I mean, if I trust, have been down there, but I mean, I would, and I would like to have the inspector or be present when it is, so that we, they're seeing with their eyes.
The problem is Jim just went away.
Well, yeah, but I mean...
But the fire, the fire department, whether it's the chief or his assign, is the inspector anyway, you know?
If we could get the police, someone from the police department, someone from the fire department, and the highway superintendent to go down there together, that would be good. Okay? But in the meantime, do you have a plan B?
Well, plan B's lost.
What about Rehoboth? They have Red Plain, and there was a, there was a powwow there...
...who's been trying to get into his founding towns.
Oh, okay.
Due to an issue that this office put on the internet council, the town council thing or something, on the internet, that we've spread excrement on the ground, nobody wants it.
We didn't put anything on the internet.
Nothing went on there to that...
That turned up when the Gazette reporter came, and we didn't call the Gazette. We didn't, and we didn't call the reporter from Channel 10, but he... We didn't, and we didn't call the reporter from Channel 10, but he came. But that, that story hasn't come up. I don't know what they did with it.
I think though, right now, instead of bringing full moons out...
Oh, I agree. I agree.
I think we need to figure out the best approach of doing this so that both sides can come to an agreement, people's safety, events...
You see, there really doesn't have to be an agreement here. Because now, the agreement has to come between your two parties.
But I also do want...
We may not approve because we don't know the access and egress safety factors. We don't know if the, if the police chief is going to say, "Yeah, forty cars can go in there," or what. This is up now, you make the call to the fire department, because it's not our venue anymore. You make the call and say, "We've talked to the selectmen. Would you come up and look at it and see, you know, if the truck and ambulance?" Then it's up to you people. You know, this is, this is a verbal contract with you two. We want both sides to be protected.
That would be scary because I felt there were laws, I can't get one in.
Well, that's just it, and that's why I would like to, I would like to have the document too, that way there got written, statements, yes, the truck is empty, no, the truck is not empty.
Well, see, it's important for you, for your insurance.
And you may end up, if in fact, like this case I told you about, and that was, that was a road, a private road, it's actually got a name. And before he could get his certificate of occupancy, he had to be able to provide the space. If in fact, you find out, your own personal business, that a fire truck can't get up there and make the loop, you're going to have to, for your own protection, you need to make some space. Because obviously, it's an insurance issue for you. I mean, as far as fire protection and, and that whole thing.
Come up with myself now, so.
The other reason I asked you if there's a plan B, because if you don't, if it can't get up there, you're faced with another problem. Okay? Now, Mr. Agia has made his written recommendation, that's why we read it. You know exactly where he's coming from. So that's out in the open. The other thing I'm going to suggest, and again, it's your event, but I understand the importance of part of this event. And that's, there's going to be a, I'll call it native wedding ceremony.
Is alcohol, will be alcohol?
No, I'm not talking alcohol. No, I'm talking about there's going to be a native wedding event. Something to consider as part of Plan B, if you can't have that powwow on that property. Next door, there is a gazebo. Out back, there is the Lions Pavilion. People have asked permission to use the gazebo for wedding ceremonies, and they've held their, I'll call it reception, in the Lions Pavilion. We've had people use the Lions Pavilion for their reception. They got married somewhere else, but for a reception, they wanted a relaxed summertime event. So they had a cookout or something. So all I'm saying to you is, think about it, if the powwow thing, spot doesn't work out, you still got a wedding planned. And we just have to check to make sure the gazebo's not being used. And then you would check with Kyle Stontstrom for the pavilion to see if the date is open for the wedding. As far as the, you won't be able to hold your powwow, but you can hold your wedding. You can certainly, there's a place for your wedding. Or you can have the wedding at the pavilion if you want to have something outside. But that's an alternative for your wedding event. People coming to a, I'll call it wedding ceremony and reception, it's not something you charge admission to. It's a private celebration of an event. And with permission to use the gazebo, and if the pavilion's available and you use that for your reception, or if the weather's bad, you could have your wedding inside there, if that's what you choose. Then the kind of rules that would be involved would be, you wouldn't need a police detail because it's, you're not going to have thousands of people. You wouldn't need the fire detail for the wedding. If you choose to have it catered, as opposed to you providing your own refreshments or whatever, the vendor would have to be a vendor that's licensed in the town. I know sometimes you have potlucks. And so, again, if you bring in a food vendor or a caterer, they would have to be licensed. But if you're doing something like a family get-together, you know, where people bring things. So this can be part of Plan B if in fact, the powwow event doesn't work out at your location. Okay? So this is just something to think about, because we've had a number of weddings out there. Well, my point in it is that the ceremonies that have been held out there, I haven't personally attended any of them. But they were, I will say, wedding ceremonies that were designed by the couple. Obviously, there was an official there who could conduct a marriage under state law. But they're, they were, I almost want to say custom tailored weddings as far as the ceremony, the vows, the whole event. So that, and it was as private as they wanted it to be, and their friends were there to celebrate it. So I just mentioned this to you, something to think about. I mean, if the powwow doesn't go on, it, personally, I would think the wedding can go on. But again, just something to think about, okay? So if you get in touch with the fire department and the police department and the highway department, Mr. Berry, and tell them that you talked to the, you came to the meeting and it was suggested, you want to, you want to have a fire truck go up there to test its capability to maneuver, to get out of there in an emergency. And then, if that works, you need to look at the parking. There are vendor pit permits required. You already know about liability insurance. And if you have outside vendors, they have to be licensed. You had one the last time.
And anything with food, that I didn't know the process here.
Yeah, okay.
And there would be a factor.
Well, we had Paul lined up again.
Right.
Yeah, and it's, you need, if you're going to use Paul, you need to tell him to get his license renewed. It expires September the 30th. So, I mean, we ran into this with your other event, that's how you got Paul, because the lady's insurance was, but this is a permit thing. So you got...
We just found out today.
Yeah, you've got, you've got time here. And he's got time to come in, because, I mean, this is a business of him, so he's, he's going to renew his annual permit. He's not just an event, one permit at a time. He's, he's the whole year.
Now, as far as the ambulance, we have available to us EMTs that could set up a triage tent.
How many people do you think are going to come?
You know, I know what you're thinking about, if, you know, people dancing around and everything, you know, some of them are older and they might, you know, there's always a chance that someone could expire, you know what I mean?
But it's, it's not the age of the people or that you might have events where if you're dancing and somebody trips or something. One of the main things to be concerned about is the number of people. Just like if you were having an event inside a building, it has a capacity. And when, when certain, there were like thresholds. Up to a certain number of people, you have a certain number of police officers. If it goes to the next level, you need a couple more. And that's the same thing with fire and ambulance. Okay? A small gathering, private gathering, obviously, you don't have to have police and fire. But with a crowd, there are levels. I mean, even in facilities like church suppers or whatever, each hall where they serve food has a capacity. And that's the number of people that can occupy that space at a given time.
Fire, car...
If they have a sit-down dinner, or if they have a table arrangement. If it's a program where you're sitting in chairs in rows, like a theater or something, obviously, the capacity for the same room is much higher, because you don't have tables and furniture and stuff. So it's not the general health or age of the attendees, it's the number of people who will attend. And there are certain, I'll call them medical requirements, that relate to the difference between having an EMT present and actually having a staffed ambulance present with both an EMT and somebody who is a paramedic. Because there's, one drives and one is in the back, in case of a transport.
Like a licensed nurse or RN or whatever?
Well, that's a little different. That's like...
Well, we've had that in the past. We've had, we've had a triage set up, and we've had a RN and...
Well, we don't have an ambulance, we've never had an ambulance.
See, the ambulance is fully equipped also with, it's got equipment, it's got, obviously. What I will say to you is, and certainly, I don't think we're talking this number, but you probably know, the first weekend in August is the Pan-Mass Challenge, it's the bike ride. The first big stop for that bike ride that leaves from Stirbridge is Dayton-Rehoboth Regional High School. They start arriving there 10:30, 11 o'clock in the morning. Although they have little stops along the way, that's where they stop for lunch. There's restrooms, there's medical facilities, there's bike repair, there's, you name it, it's there. And it's like a big self-contained unit that's prepared to deal with anything. And after they leave Dayton-Rehoboth, they have some stops along the way. But the next big stop is the Mass Maritime Academy, because that's where they bed down for the night before they go on to Provincetown. Obviously, those are thousands and thousands of bikers and support people and residents out there cheering them on. But, and they're not all there at the same time, they're coming through and moving on to get to the next stop. But because of the number of people involved, the riders, the volunteers that serve food and do all that stuff, there, sometimes there's entertainment like a DJ. That number of people requires a lot more, and it's because of the number of people that, in effect, are being there at the school over a period of time. And, and if you've been in town at that time, when they leave Dayton-Rehoboth, every intersection from the high school down to the bridge has got at least one police officer and sometimes two to direct traffic and keep everything moving and keep everybody safe. So that, obviously, that's a really huge event. But again, what is required is based a great deal on the amount of people, the number of people who they anticipate. And that event every year grows, kind of like our cow chip every year, you know?
Well, I've been, I've been on Tremont Street in Rehoboth when that bike races.
But considering that this field is, it's a powwow that began in the October, we've never had to have an ambulance on that field. We've never had to have all these police, because it's open to the public. When you open something to the public, how do you give a number?
Well, there's something else to, and Mr. Cronin tried to, he mentioned this. When you use public property, whether it's out here, a school facility or whatever, because it is public property, especially this location, we've got fire stations close, we've got police close. Now, you're, obviously, the number of people who come to your events, it's readily easy to see, whether you've got a crowd like cow chip or whether you have a small group of people or people who come and go. So you have not had huge crowds on public property. Where you're going is a residential area, it's private property. That's where some of the difference comes in, okay? The kind of things you can do on public property. Even though you aren't being told, "You got to do this and you got to do that," a lot of what you are asked to do when you are on private property is already, if you will, it's already covered because you're on public property. Now, one of the things that was mentioned to Mr. Rogers was liability insurance. Right.
We have that.
But you have it, he's got to make sure he's going to be covered. Because when you come to the town to get permission for your events, in the past, you were asked to provide proof of insurance, and also listed on that certificate of insurance, it says, "Also insured town of Dayton." Going to a private property and private residence, he should ask for your insurance certificate, and it should say that he is an also insured. Because what that means is if anybody gets injured and they go to file a claim, your insurance kicks in first, and he's got protection from your insurance and his own insurance. So when you come to the town, that's what happens. If somebody's injured at your event, your insurance is the first one. If there is, you know, the claim is big and exceeds what liability you have, then they come to the town, and then of course, if anybody gets hurt or injured nowadays, everybody gets sued anyhow. So, so that's one of the things that is in place when somebody comes in to ask to use property.
We knew that already, so that's what we did, because we knew we needed that.
But the main differences, as Mr. Cronin pointed out, is where you're going is not public property, it's private property, it's zoned residential, okay? So zoning laws apply. Now, when you're here, the town of Dayton, it's public property, you have the permission. The zoning laws for this patch of land in Dayton Town are not the same as they are in residential areas. And those zoning laws that are in place in the town, those residential laws and other zoning bylaws, those laws were put in place, those bylaws were put in place by the voters in this town. So it's not like the Board of Selectmen is saying, "Well, it's residential, you can't do that because..." No, those zoning bylaws were voted at town meeting. So they're on the books, and that's why, when you look at this, how is the property zone? It's zone residential, okay? How is that area where Town Hall is? Well, that's, that's public property and different rules apply. So he was just making you aware of that as far as what the requirement is. And that's why he said, "This is something that you have to work out." And we're just bringing to your attention the differences in what your responsibility is as the property owner and what their responsibility as the entity that wants to hold a, a public event on your property.
And it's, it's more for peace of mind for E20ers. Now, if you were to pick up the phone tomorrow morning, since it's your property, it's their venue on your property, and you call Chief McDonald, call Chief Roderick, "Could you come down here with a truck, you know, we have some questions of access and egress," you know? They'll give you peace of mind, they'll tell you. They have been to these powwows. They know that, you know, the amount of people that, that go. They're the ones that's going to consult you. We can, we can't, we're not in a position now, on private property, to say, "You have to have this, you've got to..." This is left up to the chiefs, because they do it at house parties. They'll do it at the time at Arugio Farms, you know, they, they tell you what is, is needed for your own protection.
Oh, yes, yes, certainly.
And the animals that get close up to the farm than they have here.
But they'll tell you, they're, yeah, I know what you're saying now, but they're the ones that are going to advise you. They're going to advise you because you're on private property. This gentleman will have peace of mind, and you'll have peace of mind, you know?
Kevin?
I've never been to the site, but do you think any neighbors would come by?
No.
Do you think you have any neighbors?
But again, this is stuff you have to work out.
It's something you'd have to take into consideration.
My, the fire thing is all I really care about. If one is getting, able to get in the fire truck and ambulance and a police cruiser down there, in and out without any ringaling. People's safety. I want to make sure that they got all their permits and insurance that's going to cover this whole thing to make sure everybody is covered without a big mess going on. Basically, all I care about is the safety aspect, really getting the fire trucks and the cruisers down there.
And I think that's, that's for both sides, I think you're both...
The thing, and like I said, the insurance aspect and making sure all the venues, I don't want to use code standards, bee cleaning and stuff like that, and get the porta potties in and stuff like that. Now, I'm going to bring this up, because I know where I came from is a little different than here. This can't be, kind of, they go differently. Now, on the port... Now, on the porta-potties, does your town require them to be wheelchair accessible?
Yeah.
I always give them.
And there's one-
I think they always do. They always have one.
Some towns, they require, they require to be wheelchair accessible.
Yes, yes.
I want to make sure that I, you won't go-
We always-
We have, we always-
Yeah, we get a handicap. Yeah, I just want to make sure what the rules or regulations were on that aspect of this town. I don't handle this different than, right, things that we're watching.
I think the kind of regulations you're talking about are not town regulations, they're state regulations because you've got to be ADA compliant. So it's not, you know, that's everywhere.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What is the fee for having a policeman there if we have to have them?
I don't even know what the rate is, you know, for the detail. But again, Chief McDonald will be right out there.
And, and if the, based on the number of attendees, that the, the fire is patrol, not patrol, detail is required, the fire chief can tell you what those rates are.
Exactly. That's why I say, you know, you do have time, but you don't. Get all this little stuff out of the way. Right. Get it all out of the ways and they'll accommodate you. They'll go right up there, you know, possibly tomorrow.
I think, I think it's important that you understand also that, whether it's the Lions and the Cow Chip Festival coming out here on town property, whether it's the Arts Festival at the Arujo Greenhouses. Now, that's a business, but it's private. So, Arujo's farms are required to have, let's say, more paperwork for that Lions event for that one day than might be required out here because of it's on pri-, uh, private property and public property. As far as the cow chip, food vendors and all that stuff, Kevin comes, makes sure that they're permitted. He inspects them when the event takes place up there on that, in that private business, I'll call it. There's food up there, he's got the same responsibility. I mean, the operation of our school cafeterias, he's in there. Now, our restaurants are whatever, so that those kinds of things that relate to food service, that's kind of across the board. And Kevin has to go to inspect and make sure that the caterer is, or whoever's going to do this, is licensed, permitted in town. And so, those are all things that will, will take place just because he has to do them no matter where it is.
Now, we are going to have security there. We have to do it. Yeah, we have our own security program. But as far as the police, if there's any, you know, there's never alcohol or drugs or anything allowed.
I'm sure there will be a caution about, I know you, you had a fire when you had your event out here.
Oh, yeah.
What I'm saying to you is, I'm sure, at the rate things are drying up around here, that the fire department will have concerns. I realize it's a ceremonial thing, but I'm just telling you ahead of time because of the fire danger being so high. So you just, you know?
Because I, before, you know, I do sets off, you know, get it set up and I want to make sure all aspects are covered and everybody's covered.
How much livestock do you have up there?
I just have right now, nine horses and I got two little potty pigs, um, some bacon.
Do you own the animals or you bought them?
I got, uh, one girl owns four horses and one girl owns two. And then I have my three. And then I got, uh, five ducks and eight hens and one very cranky moose. That is not going to here very much longer to keep calling it. I'm right back. We're going to do a lot of money.
You ever get any babies there?
No, he's, he's, they're just trying to make a two little potty pigs. They don't make that big.
What I like to do is just give, you know, both parties, this is our basic, this packet that we have is geared toward food-related things. We've already gone over, you know, make your call, make it to the police, the fire. Give yourselves both peace of mind. Take their advice, what they suggest. Because like I said, they know the numbers that go. Because they've been, they've been in attendance, you know, we all have over the years. So they'll advise you. If you have any questions, I would suggest, you know, some of you, your counsel be there also and give them the questions, you know what I'm saying? Any questions you have, just throw that out.
Anything relative to food, Kevin Bernado?
Can't move answer. It's explanatory in here.
I'll swing by, um, Monday, I think I have, um, I'll swing by Monday, get all the telephone numbers that I want to need, like the his number and all that, I want to get all their numbers. That way there I can have all, well, we can just walk the property and talk as a group and make sure everybody just-
They're not getting them up there one at a time, you know?
Well, I like to get them all.
You know, within, you know, an hour or so. And they're not going to be up there all day, you know?
No, no, yeah.
They're just going to drive in, drive out, yeah, this is fine.
I like to get like the, you expect everybody to help once, that way that everybody's here with the other person's thinking, everybody's going to have ideas.
Again, you know, work it out to your advantage. That's all, that's all we care about, you know, that everybody's happy, everybody's on the same plane, you know? So, welcome to take those, read those, you know the, about the licenses and the insurance and what have you. And we verbally went over all the other stuff, so if you have any questions, please just call here the next couple of days, you know, if there's direction we can set you off at.
You don't have an extra one of those there? I can take. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
I think, and I think Jim Agia will be back in this building in his office on the 27th of September, if you have questions for Jim.
I'll definitely stop by soon.
Yeah, okay.
So I want to make sure, like, I hear everybody's input because I want to make, I want to make sure this goes smooth, this goes with no issues and people can actually have a good time.
I'll also say that if, if in fact you find out that fire truck can't make that swing-
Then that's not going to be a problem.
The fire department and Mr. Agia can advise you what to do to make accommodations in case of an emergency, okay? I mean, they're-
Actually, that's going to be a pretty good thing to look into anyways for the simple fact that the farm that I have up there-
Exactly. And the livestock.
Because the home, we didn't have, um, my neighbor's fence wasn't so close, we need to put the fence up. So now that he's got that fence up where it is and the stone wall's backing back where it belongs, it, you know, it, you can tell it's a narrow entranceway. And like I said, I want to hear all sides, I want ideas, I want this. The, the, my property where I have a name is totally different than where I came. I had 38, it was all open and flat. So it was different, you can get food bins.
Do you have much frontage on Elm Street? Or is it just basically a driveway?
It is a long driveway and it opens up like a big lollipop.
Okay.
And I have a patchland which I clear. I, I know the brush you was talking about, that was the driveway. I had that and I moved. I had moved that because of the simple fact that I had actually went in there and took all the dead limbs and I yelled because of all the drought where I had. I was, because on the new road that's next to my property, I have a lot of problem people coming up there and they were going in the woods drinking and smoking.
Oh, the development just down the road? Oh, I know what you mean.
Yeah, I have issues with them sneaking on my property. And that's why I went in there and I took the dead brush and I yelled, "Somebody dropped a cigarette there." That's the front. And I'm sorry that I did not pay $3.70 for a property that I have over now. It's not happening and I, I don't care.
And the danger to the livestock?
Well, the danger to livestock, the danger to me, danger to my neighbors. I mean, I have an elderly neighbor that I really like and I didn't care about that. So, I mean, and also too, I also want to make sure that all my neighbors are aware of what's going on, you know, and are on board with it because they're going to have to live with it for two days. And it's only fair, they're taxpayers too, that they don't go and like, "Jesus, tell me with this garbage again." You know, like this-
Yep.
Give us a second. They'll answer all your questions. Give me that.
Yeah, I want to make sure right now that everybody's-
And, and, you know, our inspectors, our inspectors will, you know, they're there for us.
Because this is, you know, a different adventure for me. And I just wanted to kind of have a, like a, who need to get together, kind of like everybody enjoy, everybody have a good time, but yet be safe.
The intent is good, it's the details that you have to work out.
Well, that's it, yeah, that's, that's just it. With a lot of detail in such a short timeframe, which is a little concerned on my part, I'm a little concerned about the short time frame, which is why I'm trying to-
Well, you know, you, before you build a house, you've got to buy, build a foundation. Well, that's the position you're at. That's all, just get it all set up. It's easier.
But they built a house in the front. I'm surprised that they allowed them to put that fence there.
I didn't, I didn't, yeah, I mean, he's, he's an elderly guy, I really liked him.
Is that the old man out there?
Yeah, he's a nice guy. I actually paid my driver because his wife, actually she-
That's your house, you went into.
-has a weight on the answer. But I paid the driver because the dust was blowing into the bedroom. So I had the driver paid for, on my out, paid it. He's like, "Oh, thank you so much."
Well, I want to thank yous for coming in. Very productive and like I say, you have questions, you know, we're here all the time. Just give us a call. Thank you very much.
If you need Kevin, just call the Board of Health number and Roz will get you connected with Kevin.
Okay, good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, review, discuss an act on a proposal from Green Seal Environmental for the old Hart Street landfill. Is this where the snakes were?
No, the snakes were on 138 on the-
I know you went up there.
Uh, last week, there were engineers here from Green Seal Environmental. This is the engineering company that does our landfill testing in North Dayton and reporting to the DEP. Mr. Ferry invited them in to take a look at the old landfill on Hart Street because the DEP has asked for information, most of which concerns how deep the cover is that's presently on the landfill. And so there is engineering data that has to be collected. And I visited the site with, with Tom Ferry and there were five employees, two engineers, two of which were engineers there. So they will be doing a background and history research and a lot of that research is being done by Tom Ferry and also Karen has done some, trying to locate all records about the landfill, when it was closed, so forth and so on. They were down there that day to begin the, the inspection of the property and also determine soil cover limits. And then they will prepare reporting. Based on the scope of work, the proposal to do this research and inspections and reporting is $7,500. And the reporting is to be sent to Mass DEP to give them the information needed to determine what has to be done next. In talking to the engineers, the general feeling is that the town may have to add more cover to the existing landscape, landscape down there. There are some trees along the perimeter where the landfill slopes down to what was there before they dumped everything down there. And there's some trees and brush that has to be cut, but DEP advised Mr. Ferry not to cut anything until the engineers had a chance to do their report. Mr. Ferry, Ms. Swist, and I attended a meeting at DEP last fall and basically heard what had to be done. So this is the beginning of what has to be done to assess what's there. So we're hoping that after this is completed and DEP gets a chance to look at it, there will be some additional fill, there'll be some tree cutting and trimming of brush, and there will be topsoil put on, whatever fill is put in there. From what we could determine, it looks like the, we won't have to cover the whole area. There's some lower areas, I'll call them depressions. Those areas will have to be, have additional soil. And then it will be seeded over and hopefully all the town will have to do is keep it mowed for time to come. So anyhow, Mr. Ferry recommends that this contract be approved. So based on that, I make a motion that we vote to approve the Green Seal contract amount of $7,500 for the services that I just outlined.
I'll step down and second that motion. Is there any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next on the new business, review, discuss an act on a road opening permit request from Columbia Gas for cutting off an abandoned gas service at 236 Forest Street.
Karen, has the town accountant seen that contract for Green Seal, do you know?
I believe she has a copy.
Okay. Okay.
Just one here.
Um, this location, 236 Forest Street, I went there this afternoon to find the location and I, I think it's the house that sits very close to the road that looks like it's been abandoned. I did speak to Mr. Ferry when I got home because this is a rare event that Mr. Ferry is saying that he will not allow a road cut to deal with this abandoned service. Forest Street was paved and when a road is paved, unless there is an emergency, there's a five-year moratorium on allowing that road to be opened again. So what Mr. Ferry said to me tonight was, "My recommendation is no, that he does not consider cutting off an abandoned gas service a reason to open up the road to do this work." So, based on Mr. Ferry's recommendation, and a denial is, is a rare event for Mr. Ferry, I move that the board deny the request of Columbia Gas for a road opening permit at 236 Forest Street, North Dayton.
I am going to step down and second that motion. Any other discussion? Karen, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
And on the other side of the fence, we have, we have three requests.
And next we is a review and discuss an act on a road opening permit request from Columbia Gas for a gas leak repair at 257 Bedford Street.
Mr. Chairman, based on Mr. Ferry's recommendation, I move that we grant the road opening permit to Columbia Gas for 257 Bedford Street, North Dayton.
Again, I'll step down and second that motion. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Next on the agenda, review, discuss an act on a road opening permit request again from Columbia Gas to install a new gas service at 428 School Lane.
Mr. Chairman, based on the recommendation of Mr. Ferry, I move that we approve the road opening permit request for Columbia Gas to install a new service at 428 School Lane, Dayton.
Next, we'll review, discuss an act-
No, you're going to, you're going to step down and second- No, you're going to, you're going to step down and second it. I made the motion to approve it.
Oh, I'm sorry, step down and second that motion. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I thought I did.
We're on a roll, we got three in a row that Mr. Ferry recommended.
Oh. Next on the agenda is to review and discuss an act on another road opening permit request from Columbia Gas to install a new gas service at 398 Center Street.
Mr. Chairman, based on Mr. Ferry's recommendation, I move that we approve the road opening permit request from Columbia Gas to install a new gas service at 398 Center Street.
I'll step down and second that motion. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next, under new business, review, discuss an act on a road opening permit request from Dyton Water District to replace water services feeding homes at 2136, 2144, 2150, 2168, 2176, 2187, 2203, and 2219 Pleasant Street.
Mr. Chairman, based on Mr. Ferry's recommendation, I move that the road opening permit request from the Dyton Water District to replace water services feeding homes at 2136, 2144, 2150, 2168, 2176, 2187, 2203, and 2219 Pleasant Street be approved.
I'll step down and second that motion. Any other discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Last, under new business, review, discuss an act on a Dyton Rehabith Regional High School proposal to rehab the sleigh and reindeer display.
Karen, we have those pink permits that we just signed, is there a denial form that should go out?
She sends a letter.
Oh, you just send a letter?
But I was going to just make a letter.
Okay, that's fine.
There was a letter.
No, I don't, we don't do that very often, so I didn't know if there was a form, okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to ask Mrs. Gulat to address this agenda item, because she has been in touch with the high school, and she's going to make a lot of kids smile this year.
One of the projects that was brought up last year, something that needs to be repaired and/or replaced, was the float that has Santa Claus in the sleigh, and if you'll remember, the, the float itself was pulled by a train. Well, that was created over 25 years ago by the Highway Department, that entire display. And those of you that come to Lights On have, have seen that year after year. For the past couple of years, because of the deterioration of the vehicle that was actually the operating mechanism for the train, and also the weathering of the, of Santa's sleigh and the reindeer and the deck, that equipment, as part of the parade, was not available, I think for the past two years. So late last spring, we met with instructors from Dyton Rehabith Regional Vocational, and also representatives from Bristol Plymouth, I took photos and sent those to them, because it's a big project to do the whole thing, and we decided that, in order to get this done, we're hoping to have it for Lights On this year, we're hoping, that we would split the projects, and the two schools agreed. So Dyton Rehabith Regional has presented a proposal, and the work that they are going to do is, I'll call it the carpentry work, to repair the deck on the float where the sleigh sits, and they're going to build a new sleigh and the reindeer, and the proposal that came in for this is $2,700, and this is basically the materials they need, because there's no cost for labor, this would be lumber and supplies and the things like, that they will need. And the plan is to have not only vocational carpentry students involved, but there will be students from the art class, and there may be some other departments involved. So I make a motion that we approve the estimate of $2,700 submitted by Dyton Rehabith Regional High School to go ahead with this project.
I'm going to step down and second. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I want to explain something. The funding for this, there is currently a fund drive on that is being conducted by the Lights On Committee. If any of you would like to help by making a contribution to this project, you should contact Mrs. Terri Fredericks, who is in, is the chairperson of the group. The reason why we are voting on it tonight is that the school department is, in effect, making an agreement with the town of Dyton for this project. This is on the same idea as the agreement that Bristol Plymouth had with us to get the town to approve printing the anniversary book that we did a couple of years ago, and at the price that was quoted, and so, in effect, the school district deals with the town of Dyton and not the Lights On Committee. However, they are raising funds for this, if you would like to help in any way, please get in touch with Mrs. Fredericks, or you can send a, send a voicemail, or leave a voicemail with Sue Medaris, and she will get it to Mrs. Fredericks. And I'll tell you about the choo-choo train after we take the vote on this.
With that said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the, when school reopened at Bristol Plymouth, which was Labor Day week, I received a call from Mr. Jim Aldopolis, and his message was, ask Mr. Ferry to get the train to us. What the train will be, not what it is right now, but what it will be is, the town acquired a piece of surplus equipment, I think it came from Quonset Point, it was military surplus. It, I think it looks like a little tank, but I'm told that it's actually a, some kind of a forklift. But anyhow, the instructors from Bristol Plymouth saw this piece of equipment at the landfill where it's been stored, and they are sure that with their sheet metal department, their art department, their design department, and there's one other department, and I'm not sure which one it is, they can convert this piece of equipment, and it will look like a train. They saw what the old train looked like, and this particular equipment is, it's, it's, it's mechanized, they can drive it, it can be adapted, and really, what they're going to be, be doing is adapting the body with sheet metal to make it look like a train, with a cow catcher and the whole thing, and the art students will do designs and make it look appropriate. So the request was have Mr. Ferry bring that unit up to the school, and I believe it went up there this week. So we're waiting for an estimate from Bristol Plymouth to convert this. So again, the agreement will be with the town of Dyton, there is a fundraiser going on, and the fundraiser is both to cover the cost of the, what I just described, what we just voted on, the sleigh and the reindeer, and the, the float that it sits on, and it will also be to defray the cost to pay for this conversion, and so that, hopefully, this Lights On, we will again have the train with the, the float, with the sleigh and the reindeer, and what's interesting is some of those students at Bristol Plymouth, and probably Dyton Rehabith too, grew up when that was actually a part of the Lights On program. And so, I think, as was the case with the BP printing our book, Dyton students get very enthused when they see something coming in that, that they're actually a part of, because they're residents, but especially this project, they grew up with this. And those of you that remember the train and the sleigh, after the Lights On ceremony, it's parked out here on Town Meeting, excuse me, Town Hall property, and it stays there till after the New Year's holiday, and many, many people come and take pictures with their children on the sleigh and with the train and all that, so we're hoping to bring that back, and hopefully, we'll get another 25 years or more out of the new equipment, but that's where we are with that.
Thank you, Nancy. Do we have any reports?
Couple of brief ones. Mr. Ferry and I attended the mass recycle meeting today in Rantham. This is a quarterly meeting that is sponsored by several state agencies. Most of the topic today talked about recycling of electronics and electronic waste. There was a presentation by two different companies that accept different forms of electronic waste, there was discussions about batteries, and there's actually going to be a merger of the, one of the, one of the agencies in with mass recycle, and there'll be more information coming about this, about, about this. One of the important things they pointed out was the amount of money that is recovered through recycling has dropped dramatically, because the price for metal, other than precious metal, is way down. And so these two companies were talking about different ways to innovate, to make sure that they can help municipalities get rid of this stuff, but also that they've got a market for it. And there are standards that have to be met, it isn't, you just can't box these up and ship them out of the country. A lot of it does go out of the country, but a lot of rules and regs on that, so it was a very good presentation. We, the next meeting is going to be, I believe, December, and hopefully, we'll know more about, the merger was, they were supposed to, the agencies were supposed to vote on the merger today, after we left the meeting, there was going to be a electronic hookup to do it, video conferencing, and there was somebody there from DEP, and she was very glad to hear that, that they were looking to merge, is, they weren't really competing with one another, but they can probably accomplish a lot more if they work together. And one of the things that both of them have tried is to get legislation passed relative to recycling, and trying to get sellers to take back equipment, and they talked about Staples will take back electronic equipment, and if you go to the website, it tells you what they will take back, and Staples will take back equipment from businesses. Best Buy will take back equipment, certain equipment, and you can get that list on the website. They will not do it for businesses, and there is a limit to how many you can bring in, you can't show up with 15 computers, but I think the limit is three units, they said, depending on what it is. And it's not only computers, there are other electronic things, like phones, you can actually recycle a telephone if you're getting a new one. Both companies and the attendees, and there were attendees from all over the state there, at least the eastern part of the state, and out to the Cape, and one of the most difficult things they have to dispose of is television, and also computer CRTs, because there is lead in the glass, and it requires special processing to get the lead out of the glass, and there isn't a lot of money in old televisions and old computer monitors, so they said that that, they're still dealing with that problem, but they, they talked about the standards they had to meet and, and things of that nature, so that was, that was a very good meeting, so we'll see how that goes, come, by December, we'll know what's happening.
Acknowledgements, we have an anonymous donation to Primetime in the amount of $30. We have a letter here from Dyton Council on Agent Primetime. We are pleased to inform you that Primetime has received a donation in the amount of $30. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town accountant and deposited in the Primetime Gift and Donations Account. Should you have any questions or need additional information, please not, please do not hesitate to call. Sheila New, Assistant Program Manager of Dyton Council on Agent.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the anonymous donation of $30 to Primetime.
I'll step down and second that motion. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Since I don't believe we have any in, public input...
No public.
No public. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll step down and second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Don't forget, ladies and gentlemen, we're back on our regular schedule, our next meeting is, what did I say, 21st?
21st.
21st.
And a Board of Health meeting.
Saturday with the Board of Health at 6:30, Board Selectment at 7:30. Thank you all for joining us tonight, and thank you cable. Good night.